All right.
Hello, everybody.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council. We'll get started. We're called to order the full City Council meeting for May 3, 2022. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Gibner?
Here.
Jordane?
Here.
Walden Outo Vales? McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Here.
Uello?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Deacon?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its citizens with disdain, with one nation, in the name of our fathers, and of our ancestors.
God bless America.
And the city of Holyoke.
And the City Council.
Before we get started, first, we drew the name. It's Counselor Bartley. We'll be voting first tonight on stuff that comes up. It was close, Counselor. Very close. There was hesitation. And then before we bring our special guest, I'd also like to recognize our very own City Councilor, Murphy Rumbaletti, for her outstanding achievement of 40 under 40. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And to Counselor McGivern on your daughter being 40 under 40 as well. Not you. Not you.
It's amazing that I'm not 40 yet and I have a daughter that's got a 40 under 40.
So weird.
Is there a 70 under 70? Give that to Joe McGivern.
There we go. Every day.
With that, I'd like to, we did all vote unanimously to give out a proclamation tonight. I will turn it over to Counselor Bartley.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rules. Take Agenda Item 24 out of order, please. And then after we do that, I'd like to make a motion to receive and adopt.
All right. So motion is to go to Item 24. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Order from Counselor Bartley, or for coming, where are we? 24. From Counselor Bartley at the City Council, grant proclamation to David Kidwell for the Holyoke Civic Symphony and their 25th anniversary. So therefore, motion be received, adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Bartley.
Welcome.
Oh, thanks very much. Mr. President, Madam Clerk, fellow City Councilors, first of all, I just want to give a quick apology. If I didn't set the record for most proclamations on one City Council agenda, then I came pretty darned close to setting it. So I do apologize for that. Just kind of came up. Second of all, I want to say thank you to our in-house calligrapher, former Ward 6 Counselor Patricia Devine. And I'm going to make a motion tonight at some point to double her salary. And I really appreciate all that she's done over the years for this. This is something that's been in the making in my mind for a while. And finally, I got a chance to invite Mr. Kidwell here. And I'm going to let him say a few words. But this is for his 25th anniversary in leading the Holyoke Civic Symphony and organization, an ensemble that's been in Holyoke, I'm going to say 54 years, but I'll happily stand corrected. And they have three to four public concerts annually, always at the Forum, HCC. It's a real treat. I know at least three of them are complimentary. I think one, they collect a very small remuneration for it. So the great thing is, there's so many great things about this, but it's a civic symphony with wonderful musicians, accomplished musicians, right here in Holyoke. Mr. Kidwell, I follow tonight, is also a Holyoke resident. So this is one of those things. It's a special moment for me. And I just want to read this proclamation, then I'll invite Mr. Kidwell. "To Maestro David Kidwell, in recognition celebrating his 25th anniversary of leading the Holyoke Civic Symphony, Holyoke's own college community orchestra." This is signed by the President of the City Council and the clerk of the City Council, Mr. Kidwell.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Mayor Garcia, Counselor Bartley, and members of the Holyoke City Council, thank you all so much for this wonderful honor. I received a similar recognition 10 years ago for my 15th anniversary with the orchestra. But this one is even more meaningful today because I'm now officially a resident of the beautiful city of Holyoke. When I tell people that I conduct the Holyoke Civic Symphony, the most common response is, oh, I didn't realize there was an orchestra in Holyoke. And perhaps some of you are having that response right now as well. But my goal is to spread the word about the orchestra. The Holyoke Civic Symphony has been around since 1967. And in my 25 years with the orchestra, we have made a point of reaching out to the community. We feature local soloists and composers. We've collaborated with the Holyoke High School Chorus, the Holyoke High School Theater Productions, and the Holyoke Strings. We usually perform at Holyoke Community College, but we've also given concerts at downtown locations, such as Heritage Park, the War Memorial, and UCC Holyoke. The orchestra works to remove financial barriers by having three of our four concerts every season be free of charge. And we strive for a welcoming, relaxed, and unpretentious concert experience. You don't have to dress up. We love having children in the audience. And no one will give you the evil eye if you clap between movements. So I'm so grateful for this honor today, but I'm even more grateful for the opportunity to spread the word about the Holyoke Civic Symphony. Thank you all so much.
Thanks so much. Congrats.
Congrats. Thanks for having me.
All right. We're just clarifying some stuff here. All right. So that takes us to the start of the agenda, which is Item 1, which is a letter veto of the amended zone ordinance for front yard pools. Order was filed October 5, 2021. And then 2 is the planning and development letter regarding swimming pools and front yards. Is there any motion for those?
Well, Mr. President, I would like to take out of order the late file for the language.
Yep.
And then I'll make a motion in a second.
So you know what I'm saying? All right. So it'd be late file E?
So motion, suspend the rules, take up late file E?
In a second.
All right. So the clerk and admin, or Jeffrey, are saying that it's not really a late file. They just add it to the, add it to 1 and 2? Because it's legal form?
Okay. Well, just, very good. Just a point of order?
Yep.
I mean, I realize we received this today.
Yep.
I mean, I'm okay to go ahead. But if there's other councilors that haven't even read the thing, then I think it's kind of unreasonable based upon that. You know, we only got it a few hours ago.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. So I appreciate you. So I'm not going to make a motion to, I'm not going to make any kind of, why don't we just leave it on the table, Mr. President?
Okay.
And so to these other people have, you got to give them consideration to read it.
Okay. So leave 1 and 2 on the table.
That's my table.
Wait, just a procedural point, if I could, Mr. President?
Counselor McGivern.
Not debate. Just if the mayor vetoed the original ordinance, and now this is a change, is this a scrimder change, or is this a change in what the mayor's looking for?
So I can answer it if you want to take it.
Well, just suspend, allow the president to.
Just so we're prepared when we do vote on it.
Well, suspend to allow the president to enter into debate regardless of matters.
Second.
It's not the main, but I'll explain, because there was a lot of communication between the mayor, Legal, myself. So originally, as I explained last time, if you looked at the ordinance, the way it was drafted, it said special permit for front yards, which is not what we debated in ordinance. We wanted just corner lots. So Legal said, let's send it back. That's why we tabled this with the veto, to send it back and fix that, because they were, they agreed they should have put in corner lots. They then did that, and the mayor said, well, we also wanted special permits out. So that's why the first one came in, just saying corner lots, special permits. But the mayor said, no, I just don't want special permits. So now the very last one in the package that you received a couple hours ago, just says, as amended from ordinance, corner lots. So if you live in a corner lot and you want a pool in your backyard, side yard, but not your front, that ordinance now achieves to do that, and you don't need a special permit. That's the whole premise, which is what we're trying to get at from the very beginning. So that's all the very last version does. It brings that up. So speaking with Legal, they said, you could, could make a motion tonight to reconsider your actions from the original one that we tabled, to then bring in the new one, because it kind of was an error in a sense of drafting, if you want to call it a scrimmer's error. I know that's kind of the comments theme lately. But, and then vote on that final one, which then if you approved it, it would take the other ones and make them moot along with the veto, because it's no longer vetoing the original, which was not done correctly. Does anyone have a question on that? Counselor McGivern?
Just, the only point I'm making is, and I think I heard the answer, Mr. President, as you said, we tabled the original ordinance?
Oh, we did. We didn't reconsider anything. We just tabled everything to fix a drafting mistake or scrimder.
So we never voted on it?
Never voted on it.
So the mayor vetoed something that we never voted on?
No, we approved, we voted on it the first time when it came out of ordinance. He vetoed it. And then when Legal and I, myself, reviewed it, we understood what the mistake was and why he was vetoing it, because it said special permit for a front yard, which was not the intent. It was special permit for a corner lot.
Which I get. I get all that. And I'm comfortable with compromise and making it work. I just don't want to set a precedent that we sent an ordinance, and once we vote and adjourn the meeting, we can't reconsider anything.
Right. That's why Legal is on, Mike is on, to go over that procedure in a sense of you can make a motion to reconsider, take up the very last version that I just explained. If you voted on that, it wipes out the other two, because they're now moot. And therefore, the veto would be moot as well.
Can you go over that again, Mr. President? Because I just want to make sure we were postured well procedurally. And I think the objective of the body, or at least a likely two-thirds majority of the body, as we voted the first time, was to fix this error. Based upon our intent, the mayor has pointed this out correctly so. And we now would like to fix it. However, we want to be courteous to our colleagues. I would like an additional time to see the edit. I'm just wondering if it would be appropriate for me to make a motion to reconsider and then table the motion to reconsider.
We can ask, because I remember, Counselor D, you raised a very good point, because you said, last meeting, are we making a motion to table procedurally? Are we making a motion to reconsider? I said, let's table it before we get to reconsider. Because once you reconsider, that's it. You can't.
That's right.
Second.
You can table the motion to reconsider, however. So I don't know, maybe we want to have.
So I.
I think Mike researched it. Yeah. Because I think Mike had now analyzed this.
Motion, suspend to allow law department to address this issue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So Mike, how are you? Are you on mute? You're on mute.
Yeah, Mike's on mute.
My apologies. Good evening, everyone. I'm well, thank you.
Evening.
And let's consider this as a veto of an ordinance passed by the council under the procedures outlined in Charter, Section 24, which interestingly enough, gives rise to the concept of reconsideration in the Charter language itself, not once, but twice. Basically says the Charter directs the council to reconsider its action. So based upon that language, and upon the council's own rule, which will allow a prevailing member to move for reconsideration at a future meeting, not at the same meeting at which it was passed, the suggestion by Counselor Jordane would be in order. It could be in order at a future meeting by taking the matter off the table, council chooses to table it again, or it's in order at this meeting if you want to take a reconsideration during this meeting. But as the chair pointed out, as the president has pointed out, reconsideration is a one-time, one-shot situation. So once it's taken up, it can't be reconsidered again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, thank you. Mike, appreciate that very much. Good analysis. I would, just for clarity of all involved, if we keep the item on the table as it currently exists at the moment, the motion to reconsider, in your opinion, is still in order at the next meeting in two weeks. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that would also allow you to give time to your colleagues who had not had the opportunity to see the most recently revised version of this proposed ordinance change.
Very good. Thank you so much. And that would be my suggestion. We do just exactly that, Mr. President.
Anyone further? Counselor Anderson Burgos, if you had a question?
Sorry. Yeah, no, I was just going to state that that's why I, the first time we, I voted no against it, because it literally said front yards. So I was agreeing that that's why I said no to it. But then I was told, no, not front yards, corner lots. And I had changed my vote to a yes. I'm just, I was simply going to state that for the record.
That's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, it was a little confusing. The ordinance committee did a really good job vetting it and saying corner lots. It was just, it came out the way it is. So we're fixing it. So the motion, Counselor Jordane, just so we get on the record?
Just to keep it on the table, Mr. President.
So.
Items 1 and 2.
To table it.
To table items 1 and 2.
So motion is to keep tabled items 1 and 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now.
Mr. President?
Yes. Mike?
The late files, should they also be tabled under that order? I know they were brought up.
From what I was told is, they weren't received as late files. They were put in as part of the package, as the legal language that was requested last meeting. So they, basically, they were received as part of the package. All right. So public comment. For here, first one, as a reminder, if you haven't spoken here before, it's a minute and a half, around the minute mark. I will let you know. And need your name and address. So with that, the first one up is Owen Brahurst.
Owen Brahurst, 1328 North Hampton Street. ShotSpotter. Last meeting, one fellow phoned in to lament the Holyoke PD's possible acquisition of ShotSpotter tech. The prospect of it, in fact, should alarm all of us. Defense Attorney T. Greg Doucette has described it as phrenology for acoustics. Various judges have determined it unreliable. People have been falsely convicted on the basis of ShotSpotter discovering imaginary gunshots that were never filed. It is far less used to find evidence, then, as Attorney B. Roberts Law noted, to fabricate and obfuscate evidence. One study found it offers no reductions in serious violent crime, yet increases demands on police resources. The problems with it are both systematic, the mics confirm the biases that went into their placement, the accuracy is low, and specific, the company admitted, the company admitted that they manually alter the computer-calculated evidence on a semi-regular basis. Research in cities to date shows ShotSpotter does not have a significant impact on gun violence. ShotSpotter rarely finds actionable evidence of a gun crime. ShotSpotter increases high-stress interactions between police and innocent civilians. ShotSpotter wastes millions of taxpayer dollars. An old adage says, never look a gift horse in the mouth. Well, this horse is not a gift, and his teeth are falling out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Pratt.
Hi, Linda Pratt, 39 St. Colby Drive. Good evening, councilors. I am here to speak in opposition to reducing or revoking the Community Preservation Act here in Holyoke. There are many things I could say about the wonderful projects that CPA has helped to fund or is currently helping to fund, but I'm not going to talk about that. I could also talk about the fact that the first $100,000 of property tax, or of property valuation, rather, is exempted automatically. But I'm not going to talk about that. What I want to talk about is the state share. And I think we all know that the CPA money is a combination of local and state revenues. And I never really thought too much about where that state money comes from. You councilors probably know. But I bet a lot of folks in the community don't. So I did look into it. And the state money comes every time somebody purchases property in the state of Massachusetts. So if you purchase property in Holyoke, you pay at the Registry of Deeds a fee that goes into the state CPA. Now, the thing is, the only communities that can utilize that money are the communities that have a CPA in their community. So if we don't have one in Holyoke, people who live in Holyoke, who buy property in Holyoke, are paying into that, but don't get to benefit from that money. So I think that's something we really need to consider as this goes into discussion in committee and comes back to the full council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Meg McGrath Smith.
Megan McGrath Smith, 7 Wycoff Avenue. To this body, I had submitted a list of projects that we have funded over the last five years. CPA has hit its fifth year, and it is at that point that it can be challenged, right, in the state legislation. And over five years, we've had four funding cycles. And I think we're really proud of the work that we've done for the city over the last five years. We have funded projects from parks, to trail development, to historic preservation, to affordable housing in the city. We've funded projects from West Holyoke down to the flats, right, across the entire city, across as many stakeholder groups as we could imagine. And one of the pieces I wanted to highlight is that it's a source of investment for a city that desperately needs it and deserves it. And when we look at projects that really can't be funded with any other source, CPA has stepped up. Mayor Field languished for years with no source of funding. It wasn't in the municipal budget. It wasn't going to be handled by CDGB. CPA did that. Wasn't going to happen otherwise. Lady Liberty, the names of our soldiers who fought and died for us were wearing away, being lost at the passage of time. And the state legislature kicked in a good chunk of money, and we closed the gap.
One minute.
We made it happen. And now their names are going to be preserved forever, as they should be, as do their sacrifice. I'm looking around this room, see a lot of work that needs to get done. I drove by Lady Liberty to come here. I parked next to the annex, Scott's Tower. We have a lot of projects coming down the pike that I hope we're a part of. And I hope that we keep that source of funding so that we can keep investing in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online? Spencer Fox?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Yes, thank you for having me. Spencer Fox Peterson calling from 51 Portland Street. And just calling to echo what Owen mentioned about ShotTracker. No to that. Want to make a point that, in addition to all of the great points he made, the ShotTracker, I know it doesn't come from our budget directly. It will come through grants, which are just basically like cut-and-paste grants that they send out to every police station. So there's grant money out there. I think we should get a grant writer and look for grants that are more custom-fit to Holyoke and not militarizing our police. It will be better investment all around. We could invest in signage and new technology that other countries are using for traffic control. And there's lots of great ideas. I've emailed some of them to y'all. But no to ShotTracker, no to a dragnet of police state. And these aren't Christmas toys, as Chief Pratt has been quoted as saying. You can find that on the shoestring from last August. So that was pulled from his emails, I believe. Anyways, I just say no to ShotTracker. Start, we need to find a grant writer to write grants that are custom.
One minute.
For Holyoke that invests in food, housing, and the like. You know, invest in people, not military. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So there's no one else here, no one else on Zoom. There is one that came in by the email. My name is Gary LaPlante, 57 Dillon Ave. I'm not able to come to public comment for May 3. I would like to voice my opposition to installing ShotTracker technology. I'm aware that it is coming via a grant or other funding program and may not cost the city upfront costs. But that is not my concern. The technology is questionable at best and has concerns that have been linked to profiling. And my opposition is simple, no to ShotTracker. Gary LaPlante. With that, that is the end of public comment. On to communications. Item 3 is from the city clerk and from city administrative assistant, which is April 5 and April 19, council minutes. Motion be to receive?
Motion to receive. And, Mr. President, I haven't really gotten into it, but should we be adopting the minutes? I know we sort of received the minutes, but I think it's really, procedurally, the body should be actually accepting and approving the minutes, as opposed to just receiving the version that we get from the people that prepare them. So I'm not going to make a big issue out of here, but just something to think about for future meetings if people agree. But I think the board actually should be receiving and adopting. I mean, de facto, that's kind of what we're doing, but.
Well, we can say receive and adopt unless they're subject to change. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 4 is from Anthony Delude, Retirement Board stating Jack McCarthy is being nominated for the trustee position of the board.
Motion to receive.
Motion is received. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 5 is the parking rec. Minutes of February 17.
Received.
Received. Motion is received. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, can we take, suspend the rules, take 6 and 26? Thank you. I thought I heard that. Thanks. Thank you, Jeff. 6 and 26 as a package and ship them to ordinance, I believe, or up?
Second.
And, of course, copy to city engineer and that sort of thing as well.
So take up 6, suspend the rules, take up 6 and 26 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
6 is a petition for speed humps. And then 26 is an order from Counselor Bartley regarding those speed humps on McIntosh Terrace.
McIntosh.
Motion would be to receive and refer to ordinance into the city engineer's DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Could I have a copy of the petition, item 6?
Well, a copy to Counselor Jordane.
Thank you.
7 is a.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can we suspend rules and take 7, 8, and 9? They'll all be going to ordinance?
Yep.
Second.
Suspend the rules, take up 7, 8, and 9 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
7 is a petition for a zone change. 8 is a special permit. And 9 is also a new special permit. All to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. President's report. Only 10 pages. Don't worry. Just kidding. First one is Gary Rome is having a 2050 anniversary. There will be a request for. There will be a request for proclamation from Council Bartley and myself. There is a memorial service for Jim Jakowski down at the merry-go-round on the 13th as well. Update on our pictures, I did send in the latest information that they were requesting for the very last photo cycle, so that should now get us a print. And once that's done, I'll let you know exactly when we're going to get the photos in. There is a, yeah, in the invoice, we've got to pay it. Public Safety is having a meeting May 9th at the Senior Center. That's regarding the HGNE and information on the trees and everything else that were coming down for sidewalks. HCC is having their 750 anniversary. That starts tomorrow. Council Bartley, I have the citation or proclamation if you need it. Fireworks, June 24th at 6:00 PM. Rain date is the very next day up at HCC. And then finally, been talking with the mayor. I know there was an order to have him come in, give the state of the city. Also, he's finalizing the budget, so he was looking at the 10th, and now we're looking at the 12th as the potential of having him in around 6:00 PM to have him give the state of the city as well as receive the budget, which then we just lay on the table and then we'll set up the budget hearings. So that's where we stand for now, and then he'll confirm all that hopefully tomorrow. But those are the dates that were thrown around. So it won't be the 10th now. There's a public service meeting, so the 12th is kind of the next step, and it gives him a couple more days. Council Bartley?
Yeah, that's, that's great news. Just if I could, through the chair, to the Public Safety Chair, I know that there's a meeting in, in the Senior Center. I, I know I have several orders and, or at least one or two that I can think of in Public Safety. I would just request that they not be taking up, taken up at that time. I just would rather have them done here, if that's okay. So I, I know you're going to have a, I don't know what kind of agenda it's going to look like, if it's just going to be the trees and all that stuff.
I think that was the intent.
Okay, good, great. Okay, so no other, no other Public Safety?
Yeah, really, that night when we received it to have Jim Lovell and the representatives come in, it was suggested to put it in a committee so public, you know, Council Revere was happy to take it and run with it. Council Jordan?
Yeah, just a brief announcement. I wanted to give a recognition of congratulations to Sister Mary Cecilia, who celebrated her 95th birthday as a member of the Sisters of Providence here in Holyoke at Providence Place, a lovely lady who has, for her entire life, done nothing but service to the people of Holyoke, starting from the records room over at Providence Hospital when it was across from the, the post office to working in ministry at Our Lady of Guadalupe and Perpetual Health Parish, and, and now even in her later years at Providence Place. So I did want to say happy birthday to Sister Mary Cecilia, 95 years old.
Anyone further? Council McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. The service at the merry-go-round for Jim Jakowski is a celebration and a dedication for his service to the merry-go-round for over 25 years as the president of the Friends of the Merry Go-Round. The Holyoke Merry Go-Round is going to be the recipient of the Holyoke Buyer Association's golf tournament this year. It's on August 15th. There are still some available slots for golfing if anybody's interested, and there's also available slots for the dinner only. And we're much appreciated to the Holyoke Buyer Association, who's been doing some wonderful work, not just on the golf course, but for many organizations within the city.
No one further? We are off to committees. First one is ordinance 10A. Commandant Orange?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I have a question on a point of order relative to 10A.
Sure.
I was informed today that the position is not an ordinance position. It had been referred to committee from finance, thinking that it was. So I'm just checking in with you on a point of order in terms of how to properly proceed.
If it's not an ordinance change, I guess it would just be a vote of the council to change the reclassification from W-2 to W-7, and you just don't need an ordinance change.
Well, so what happened is that had already been negotiated with the union and approved by the mayor, and that was sent to us in ordinance from legal because finance didn't have it. So as I'm understanding it, the matter is closed unless the department needs to file in order for a transfer if they don't have enough money in the particular line for the position. So I just wasn't sure if we just give it leave to withdraw, given that new information, or what your pleasure would be.
Well, why don't we suspend the rules, ask Mike, because Mike's here, and just make sure exactly how...
Okay, motion is suspend rules to hear from legal relative to item 10A.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Mike?
Good evening again. I believe this is a, a position under contract that would be best dealt with by the council by the receipt of a memorandum of understanding.
Which we have.
Between the city. Yeah, and, and you could just receive that.
Okay.
And that's for the information of the council, and that would satisfy the notice obligation that the city had and the union had to notify the council. But other than budget action and the upcoming budget, nothing else needs to be done.
Okay. Thank you very much. So then, Mr. President, I will offer a motion to receive and adopt the committee report and receive the MOA from the union.
All right, so Council McGivern?
The, first of all, as far as putting the classification in ordinance, that's been a, a tradition, even though it's negotiated, and I respect that with the, with the negotiating body and the mayor, that is subject to appropriation. But as far as the ordinance, we've learned in the past that, you know, negotiations that are specific to a classification, it doesn't hurt to put it into an ordinance form for the purpose of perpetuity and the purpose of keeping the, that position when the auditor and the department heads and everybody puts the budget together, you know, two, three years from now, and everybody forgets what the MOU stated. MOUs are traditionally received by this body, which I'm not too sure we have received it, but we always put that in finance because even if it's not going to be, even if it's in the budget already, it's still subject to a, an appropriation vote by, by this body because it has future impacts on future budgets.
Mr. President, if I may?
Council Vacan?
So prior to today's communication, the committee had recommended that we adopt the reclassification as supported by the MOA that was sent to us from legal.
All right, so just looking at the budget, the office assistant is not an ordinance position, so it would just be to receive and approve the MO, MOU.
I, I don't see why we can't put the classification part of that into ordinance form, but that's my opinion. But as far as an appropriation vote, we need to do that.
That still comes to us, yeah.
And what, what is the appropriation?
That we don't have before yet. This is just changing.
We don't, we don't vote on the MOU, MOA. We vote on the appropriation has to be in front of us.
All right, so this would just be to receive, that they're changing classification. They'll have to come back to us with the appropriation.
Uh huh.
Okay? Does that make sense?
As long as the auditor's listening.
All right, so, yeah, but they're transferring over, so they'll have to... All right, so for 10A, motion would just be to receive that this has been complied with, and then we'll get the appropriation. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Now on to 10B.
And, Mr. President, if we can suspend the rules and take up 10B, C, D, and E as a package?
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules, take up B, C, D, and E as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
B is the, go ahead, Council Vacan.
Oh, no, I'll wait till you go through them.
All right, so Commandant Orange has referred, this is 10B, a petition for 876 Grow at 360 Ray Street. Recommend it be adopted with the following conditions, that the owner of the building always pay commercial property taxes to exempt by federal, state, and local law during the special permit. Two, that miss retain a minimum of 30% of Holyoke residents for non-security jobs. Three, that the hiring preference be given to security personnel that are retired Holyoke police or retired members of another department who now live in the city of Holyoke. There shall be no marijuana consumption allowed on site, that the hours of operation are set by city ordinance, that the applicant, this is number six, that the applicant must abide by Massachusetts general law and guidance for Canvas Control Commission. Seven, that the petitioner applicant shall conform with the city health laws, rules, and regulations, including order, ordinance, or nuisance control. 10C is a petition for Green Grab, which is 620 Boulay Street. Looks like the same conditions except for eight, is that the applicant be in compliance with the March 22, 2022 letter from the planning department. D is from River Grove LLC and for 475 Canal Street. Same conditions except for eight, that they be in compliance with the March 22, 2020 letter from planning department. And number nine, that the condition of the existing piping in the building is to be verified as well as the condition of the existing sewer service outside the building. This is to be completed along with the testing and confirmed with the existing roof and storm drains have been separated from the sewer service prior to the application of the building permit. 10E is a petition from WTM-SB for 120 Middlewater Street, and that would be the same conditions as the other ones, one through seven. With that, the motion would be receive, adopt...
And grant the special permits.
And grant the special permits. Under discussion, Council Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I will give a brief summary, but I do want the whole council to know that each application had an average of three public hearings, and these were all vetted, and the planning department did a thorough look with feedback to the applicants. And I thank the committee for having a long night. One of these applications went back to the end of 2021. So we have, I think, finally accomplished getting out of the year 2021. So I do thank the committee and everybody on it and all the members that participated for their patience and perseverance on these. And otherwise, the process was thorough. The review took place as we have become accustomed to for all of these four applicants, and we had a unanimous vote from the committee to approve all four of these applications. Thank you.
Anyone further on these? Seeing none, the motion is to receive, adopt, and grant the special permit for all the B, C, D, and E. Clerk will call row if you vote yes, you're voting for all of them.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givern?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Abstain.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Eleven Yays, one abstain.
Your vote, you approve that. One point to note, that Council Maldonales is not here tonight. He's traveling. He's actually, he's on a plane. So he would try to zoom in, but I don't think he'd get really good service, so he sends his apologies.
That would be a first. Mile-high meeting.
All right, so off to finance. 11A, Commandant Finance has referred an order from Attorney Deegan that the legal opinion regarding the legal expenditure of CPA funds awaiting disposition?
That was tabled.
That was tabled? Oh, okay. Anything else that was tabled?
A number of these.
All right, so A, what about B?
B was tabled, yes, B was tabled.
11A was reported not complied with.
11A was?
No. No, 11A, Joe, that we tabled that, we're waiting for Attorney Deegan, and that was on the CPA and our friends at Girls, Inc.
So A, B, and C were tabled. This is D. That's...
Yeah. B was tabled, and Jeffrey is going to be helping us to talk to the mayor on B.
So I have D as next. I thought that was A, so glasses aren't working anymore. All right, 11D, the Commandant Finance has referred an order from...
What about C? What happened to 11C?
I don't have it before me.
Yeah, 11C and 11D were done as a package, and we're going to, Joe, I believe you wanted to have us approve those, the free cash. 11C and D? Do we all have the same agenda, hopefully?
I, I'm not too sure.
I have the online one.
I have the one that came in the mail.
Me, too. 11C was the letter from the mayor, our free cash calculations. It goes hand in hand with the certification, free cash calculations that's submitted by the auditor. What we actually did with the letter was, we kept it for the archives.
Right.
But a copy with the, with the free cash certification, which I can explain in the, in the committee report.
So C, although it goes with D, was stayed in committee for archiving. So then D, we'd be on D officially tonight, which is Commandant Finance refer an order that the auditor free cash certification calculation for fiscal year 2022. Motion would be receive and adopt?
Adopt, please.
Council McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, I know by now everybody has received the free cash certification. It was a lengthy process this year due to a number of things. It's, it's good news. It's one of the better free cash certification amounts we've seen in the last three to four years. It's not great news, but there are, there are been some great movement in terms of the, the deficit issues with, with a number of different accounts, not just grants, but primarily with grants. And there are no new deficits to speak of as far as this closing fiscal year budget goes. There are still a number of deficits open from prior, prior years, some going very far back. And we expressed some concerns, asked a lot of questions, and accepted, you know, for the purpose of the certification, what we are looking to do this evening. There's, the, the amount that is before us for certification is the, the $2,874,98. The mayor submitted his letter, submitted and gave us some prelude into what he is going to propose to do with the, with that amount of money, and I apologize, it's $2,382. But the, what he's, what he's proposed to do is a number of things that I think are going to be, be well-received by the council, but that's not, that's for a later date when he, he has to put the actual appropriations in it. In the past, when we weren't running negative numbers in the free cash calculations, we used to make a motion to receive the certified number by the state. We cannot do anything until the state, with free cash, until the state agrees with it, and that's the certification process. And then we're just announcing that we, you know, to the, you know, when the auditor puts it in front of us with the, with the mayor, that we are adopting it and now allowing the mayor to propose to, to, if he so chooses, to, just like any other transfer, put appropriations in front of us. There was a lot of discussion about the deficits. Again, I, I think we should continue to keep an eye on this. There's been an effort made. Our auditor told us by the school department to correct a lot of theirs. Council Jordan, myself, and the members of the committee, we asked a few questions about some of the specifics here. I, I still find it puzzling, and I know Kevin, I welcome back, Mr. President, and I think we're both trying to get to the bottom of how this, I, I'm just going to say accounting, you know, explanation is given to us because it's like, you know, I, I thought when they said, you know, you know, the, the free cash number would have been $1.6 million higher than it is. So I'm thinking that that $1.6 million is wiping out the deficit. But the year passed, we were told that, no, the deficits don't go away till the money's appropriated by the mayor, and, and then we, we agreed to it, and the deficit's wiped out. And so where does, where does the $1.6 million go? And we're basically told it just kind of goes into an account, it stays there and could be used next year again, or be looked at next year again as whether it's free cash or a deficit. You know, I'm not an accountant, trust me. I'm not trying to explain it. I know our president is a tax attor- I know our president is a tax attorney. I know Counselor Jordan is an attorney with a lot of experience in budgeting. It still makes no sense to me. But free cash does make sense to us. It's good news. Whatever the mayor proposes, we're not voting on that tonight, but we certainly will have some good discussions when he puts anything in front of us. So I ask that just for the sake of making sure we do this right, that we adopt the certification, the certification, the free cash certification number this evening, and allow the mayor to put appropriations in front of us.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, I just want to compliment, the chairman again ran another fantastic meeting as he always does. I would just add, I think we got a glimmer of perhaps the answer from the city auditor that I believe there's another procedural step that perhaps after we got plumbing into it, that there will be an appropriation. Once we recognize the 2.3 million, there will have to be a, one, a transfer into this, the, into the cannabis stabilization, but there will also be a appropriation from the general fund of 1.6 million to now pay this deficit off. So it sounded like that would be the avenue potentially to actually do it, because if we don't do that, then, that's right, that will once again be sitting on our books for next year. So it took us a little while to get to there, but I think, I think we're tracking okay with Tanya, but I'm sure that'll be up to the mayor and for her to come back to us at a later date, and I'm sure there'll be a whole discussion. And I was also impressed by the mayor's presentation, and by the way, he deserves a lot of credit for coming to all of our meetings. I mean, he's, he's really working very, very hard, and it's very much appreciated. I even made a joke that we might have to get him a desk, he's here so much, so it's, it's really refreshing. So anyways, I would just add that he made a number of good points. He's also discussing adding a comptroller, which might be somebody to help us reconcile the 387 grant funds that we have. So that might be something we'll have to, to look at that as far as improving the internal control structure. The other point I wanted to make, let's see here. It eludes me at the moment, but I'm sure it would have been a great point. But the, there was one other thing, and it's escaping me at the moment, but that's fine for, for now. But it was a very good finance meeting. Oh, yes, I do remember. I wanted to also compliment the mayor on the stabilization fund, the general fund stabilization fund. He is committed to make, start making principal appropriations back into that of some percentage. So that is very welcome news for a number of us that have been advocating to that. Always at least doing something to squirrel money away for a future date. We have not made a principal payment into the stabilization fund since 1999. That was the last time. We've been allowing the interest to grow, but we have actually not made any contribution. So for us to do that is really welcome news, and I, and I appreciate Mayor Garcia doing that.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motion is to receive and approve the certification. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Next, that I do have is eleven F. So eleven E was tabled.
That's correct.
So F is the community finances refer nor that in accordance with master law 44 section 53A, the city council hereby accept the provisions of the defibrillator equipment grant, no match. It's $2,420.42. So that would be a motion is to receive.
Pass the first reading.
Second.
Discussion, Counselor McGivern.
The committee does recommend that we adopt and allow this grant to be accepted and spent by the police department. We have Chief Pratt with us last night. He explained to us, no match, the $2,420.42 will buy one automated external defibrillator, which will be our first one in a cruiser. He's hoping it's just the first of many, and that eventually all cruisers will be equipped with them. The grant came from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, and we're much appreciated to the state, and we hope we see more of these in the future.
Anyone further? So motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call, Ralphie, yes, you're voting for the grant.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approved that grant. Eleven G.
Unanimous vote, everyone's voting tonight.
Community finances refer nor that the city council work to develop a system similar to CPA funds that are collected and issued for the host community agreement related to the cannabis industry, ideally composed of residence service providers and businesses located within Ward 1 and 2.
I make a motion that the order be given leave to withdraw at the request of the maker of the order, who's Counselor Israel Rivera.
All right, so motion is to give leave to withdraw. Under discussion or?
Counselor Rivera just stated that there are some replacement orders and some other things in place. I know the, the good Ward, Ward counselors, I believe, have been working with the mayor on, on some ways of involving the community and, and different, and different vetting of projects that are to come. But at, at his request, the committee agreed to give leave to withdraw.
All right, so motion is give leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Eleven H. Community finances refer nor that the Office of Planning, Economic Development be invited in to discuss the reasons behind the absence of the medical marijuana provider in the city. The goal for the discussion is come up with viable pathways to provide for the services for residents for this upcoming benefits. So this would be?
Make a motion that it's been complied with.
Complied with. So motion that it's been complied with, under discussion.
Yes, the maker of the order, Counselor Paulo, and, you know, was looking for some information about medical marijuana and what the status was in the city of Hoyok. Our community, our development director, Aaron Vega, came before the committee on this and a couple of other issues, and gave us an update. A couple of good pieces that we learned last night was that one of the members of, I forget the board, but the state board that oversees medical, oversees marijuana itself, is a Hoyok resident, and also that there is a company that's about to open up for medical marijuana purposes, a company that's about to open up for, to open up this summer, which is known as, I believe.
Solerge.
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 Thank you. And we, I think we all know that, you know, there, there still is a distinct difference between marijuana, you know, marijuana dispensary where medical is separated, they, if Aaron said it correctly, they call it a flexible counter, where one is for the dispensary of legal marijuana products, and one is for the medical, legal medical marijuana products. So we just, we certainly turn it over to the maker of the order, Mr. President, but the committee felt, we're thankful that Mr. Vega came in to explain it to us.
Counselor Paulo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great summary. I want to thank the, the Office of Planning and Economic Development and Mr. Aaron Vega for coming down and explaining it. And yeah, I really don't have anything to add. Great summary. The Cannabis Control Commission, it's the CCC, triple C. That's the, that's the name of the commission that we were looking for. But yeah, the, the key takeaway was it's Solerge is going to be opening up in the summer, so that's going to be a great thing for our residents to be able to take advantage of. Thanks.
So the motion that's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Suspend the rules and take eleven I and eleven J as a package.
Eleven I, eleven J, suspend the rules, take a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I is a request of $150,000 from cannabis stabilization to Hoyok Community College, Hoyok resident scholarships, education programming. J is $12,690 from cannabis stabilization to Oped staff, operations tracking, state law, monitoring, special licenses. So motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading?
Actually.
No?
We're, we're actually, the vote would be to receive both items and return them to the auditor for accounting purposes.
All right, so receive both and refer them to the auditor for accounting purposes?
This is the second time the finance committee took these items up in what? Okay?
Yep, it's all good.
Sorry. We, we had a good discussion with Aaron Vega on that, and that was the purpose of taking them up, and I'll explain the return to auditor. On the, the using impact marijuana money for scholarship money, we're still waiting some legal opinion from the, from the law department and some maybe advice from the state as to what can and cannot, and how to do it if it is going to be done with the, with this type of money. On the cannabis stabilization money going to a liaison in the office of the, of development and planning, we had a great discussion with Aaron Vega. He's actually looking at, he has a open planner one position, his planner two position is filled. Right now, a lot of the work is being done by the planner two, and he's looking to change the description of, of one of these positions, but also going to be asking to use impact money to maybe fund part of the salary for when they're working on different projects with the, the medical marijuana impact money that comes into the city. We know that the current amount is around $2 million. We know that not before us this evening, but coming in, maybe at the next meeting, is going to be a request by the mayor to, to return the $1.5 million from the first year that went into the general fund by mistake, and should have gone into the stabilization fund for, for cannabis. And we know that there's an estimated fair amount of two or three million in the next couple of years that will be coming our way with these, most of them are one-time fees with mostly manufacturers that opened up. So the reason we're asking just to return to the auditor is the, these monies must be spent in the fiscal year, at the end of the fiscal year, if they're not spent encumbered or properly vetted, they have to go back to the stabilization fund. These, both of these items could not be spent this year, even if we wanted them to be, so we're just asking for accounting purposes to return to the auditor.
All right, so motion is to send back to the auditor for accounting purposes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Brings us to eleven K. Community finances ordered hereby accept $12,285.45 from assessor to professional assessment and printing binding. Motion will be receive, adopt, pass first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have our chief assessor in. Deb Bernal went over the status of, she is, as we all know, we, we are the city, our appointment eventually, are looking to fill the position of assessor. When, after Tony Dooley left for the retirement board, Ms. Bernal moved up to the chief assessor, and we're trying to find a candidate that we can put into the assessor's position. It's important because the, the assessment of property is ongoing, the certification of the overall assessment of property used to be three years, it is now every five years. The office has used Mayflower in the past to help them with the, with the assessment. Counselor Jordan asked some good questions about professional assessment and, and the, the ability of Mayflower to actually do things like the abatements at the mall and the, the value of the mall coming down, which is a nationwide issue to reckon with, and certainly a major issue to reckon with here in, in the city of, in the city of Hoyok. So we had a good discussion with Deb with the, the transfer itself. We recommend it be adopted. The 11,009, 1745 goes into the professional assessment, and she had a shortage in her printing and binding for the 368.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, just to add a, a tad more of a play-by-play on there, for the listening audience that may or may not be aware of the current score with the mall, their valuation is down $100 million. That's $4 million a year in taxes. So that's a lot of money by any estimation, and I'm thankful that the assessors and with our new administration are going to take a look at bringing in professional services and assistance so that we, the city of Hoyok, have a fair fight in these abatement situations, and that their proposals are being thoroughly vetted, and that the city's financial interests are being protected. They have big firms, big professional services supporting the mall's position going up against our, our assessors that do not have this type of backup. And that is a whole area of expertise indeed. No doubt, it doesn't come as a surprise that they're going down, but to this extent, to be down 50%, that is pretty amazing. And then it raises the question of where do we go from here? So now you're talking, are we going to be down to 80 million, 60 million? Like, where does it stop? So I, I think one of the takeaways from the finance meeting last night was that we're going to look at getting some additional assistance in this office to make sure that we right-size this assessment. And in the event that we do have to have an appellate fight, this city is prepared to defend itself in such a fight, and that we have the backup that we, they know that the mall, and, you know, it's the right of any taxpayer to make such an abatement request. This is procedurally their right, but we also have to ensure as good stewards of this city's resources that we are thoroughly vetting their comprehensive abatement requests, which are extremely detailed, and making sure that we have thoroughly evaluated that to make sure that we're defending as much as we can of the city's value, because needless to say, $4 million a year forever is a lot of money. Thank you.
Anyone further? So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call, Ralphie, yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approved that one. Eleven L. Community finances request of $25,000 from veteran benefits to R and M Field. Motion will be receive, adopt, pass first reading?
So moved.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. We, we held this offense after the free cash discussion for a couple of reasons, but it was, was worth it because of the unusual department to a different department, and from one category to another category. But Jesus up here did, Veterans Affairs did hang around to, to give us the explanation. We'd heard this in the past. We know that this line item, veterans, any qualified veteran who's vetted by our city wi, by our city department is eligible for benefits, both that, any of those benefits are reimbursed up to 70%, going a little bit by memory, you know, by the state. Last, this year's budget was based on the prior fiscal year, which was an unusual year, partly because of COVID, and partly because of an influx of veterans that were, were qualified for the benefits. So he's found himself, as he's getting near the end of the fiscal year, with a surplus. The mayor reached out, the mayor was with us last evening, although this is repair and maintenance fields, this is part of the DPW budget, all department heads signed off on it. And the request is for a new field conditioner to work on, work on the parks itself. The mayor made a good argument for it, that this piece of equipment is needed. I, I did, I do agree with them, but I did ask the mayor, because I've, when I wore a younger man's clothes, I've worked for a professional landscaper on, on a couple of occasions, and I've been on Bobcats and three-blade lawn mowers and all kinds of things that, you know, you would not believe, Counselor Bartley, but I've never heard of a new or old field conditioner. But it is a piece of equipment that they need, and we know our parks are, are always the number one concern for us, especially when it comes to the, the ball fields for our, for our youth. So we, we recommend that the transfer be adopted. The mayor made the argument about free cash, as we stated earlier, and that's why it's not coming out of free cash.
Counselor Tommen.
Yeah, just to add into that, Jesus had mentioned that some of the, the benefits, some of the individuals that moved out of the area, and some have gotten other resources to receive some of this money, so that's why there is some leftover funds there in that account.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call, Ralphie, yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote approved that one. 11M, Community Finance has requested a transfer of 255,000 from patrolman sergeants, uh, to our, uh, RM, R and M building, uh, personal equipment. Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we had, again, we had Chief Pratt and Lieutenant Hart joined us on, uh, on Zoom to, uh, to walk us through this. Uh, and it should always be said, where the money's coming from, we've heard this a number of times, uh, there are both a, a good influx of reimbursed grants that are reimbursed in salaries within the patrolman's line item, sergeants, and, um, there's also a continued shortage of patrolmen and, and sergeants have some vacancies which promotions have filled, but thus creating the surplus in those two line items. Uh, the chief said in, during the, as COVID was, uh, was still in play, uh, most of our arrestees were actually being transported out to Ludlow. It was safer to hold them in, in a holding area in Ludlow than to hold them in the, uh, and not just the Hoyoke Police Department, but this was true, uh, throughout Hampden County. So matrons who are per diem were called in, weren't needed as much as they, as they typically are, thus creating that, that surplus. So he, he proposed with the mayor that they take, we take the 255,000, be allowed to take the $255,000 to purchase some, some key equipments. And we had a very lengthy discussion about this. Uh, part of it is the cells themselves and the keypad and, uh, cameras. Uh, the, you know, the cells need the upgrading, uh, cameras are not in good shape. Uh, cameras both document the, uh, the safety of the people who are in cells, the safety of the officers who are in the cell block itself and the, uh, certainly, you know, can, can be very, uh, helpful in, uh, in, um, avoiding a catastrophe or avoiding something, uh, tragic happening very quickly. So the, the second or the last, uh, part of it was looking for an elevator lift for the evidence room. The evidence room is very high. There is a lot of evidence that is collected and some of it is, needs to be stored on shelves that are well above, uh, probably the top of the ceiling. And he just knows, he just believes that this, the electronic lift would be as much safer for the officers who have to retrieve evidence or who have to put the evidence away. The, uh, the cameras for the, for the police department are $162,213.98. The City Hall annex, City Hall and Annex cameras are $13,499.18. The mayor asked that cameras would be added to the, the, uh, doors in the, uh, City Hall and the, uh, the Annex Building for safety purposes. That keypad is $42,459.18. And a key card maker, which is, you know, part of the keypad system is $4,281.96. And the lift would be $7,390. Uh, the committee recommends that the, uh, transfer be, be appropriated and that the funds would be allowed to be used this way. The, uh, the, the cost of the, of each of these pieces of equipment, um, are on a state list. Because they're on the state list, that means we locally don't have to do an RFP or go out to bid, and we can actually take the vendors who are on the state list with these particular pieces of equipment.
Seeing no one further, motion is passed the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion be to pass the second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Clerk will call roll if you vote yes. You're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote approved that one. Counselor Tommen, you left the room. I was looking for the second, you know?
I know. I didn't think that, that quick.
Everything was off.
It was all off, Mr. President.
It was way off. Uh, 11N, uh, Community Finance referred, uh, 2,000, uh, from supervisor, demo supervisor to head clerk. Motion be receive, adopt, pass first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Damien and Cody, our, our ruling inspector did come in before us. The reason for the surplus in the, uh, property maintenance demolition supervisor, it was recently vacated by the person who was holding it. So he has not just the surplus for the $2,000 if, and he, he, he doesn't think it's going to happen by July 1st, but if he filled it, he would still have enough money to, uh, pay the salary of a new, of a new individual for the rest of the fiscal year. Uh, this is a problem, uh, throughout the state on these inspection, uh, uh, spent, uh, positions, uh, within building departments. There are vacant, there's an incredible amount of vacancies, uh, everywhere. It's very hard to find qualified candidates. The head clerk is a part-time clerk, so this is not overtime, but he's just increasing the head clerk's hours to do some extra work to kind of compensate for the vacancies throughout the, uh, and the extra work that is putting on the, uh, the administrative part of the office itself. So we agree, we agreed to the, uh, the transfer to be used this way.
See no further discussion. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading. Clerk will call roll if you vote yes. You're voting for the $2,000 transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote approved the transfer. 11O, Community Finance referred an order that, uh, to explore the creation of a cannabis liaison, uh, to coordinate internal operations between the Office of Economic Development and the city cannabis industry. Uh, that would be complied with, it says?
That's correct. And I, and I think I kind of explained it when we were talking about the, uh, the other two orders with cannabis impact money. Um, we're, we're trying to figure out if the impact money can be voted upon this year to be put into the budget for next year. I know the mayor's looking into it and, uh, Aaron Vega's trying to, trying to get us the answer with the law department as to what we can do and what we cannot do with this, uh, stabilization fund when it goes from one fiscal year to the next. But we, we had a good discussion and, uh, I think we covered it when we talked about the other two orders.
All right. So motion has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
If everybody didn't get a copy of it, uh, Aaron gave us an incredible piece of, uh, information about the, uh, the financial, it's called the Financial Narrative of Marijuana. And, uh, it's just something I think if you have it or if you don't, we'll get you a copy. It's good reading.
See no one further. Uh, public safety, public service, DG and R, charter and rules, and joint committee. There are no, uh, items for tonight. That brings us to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, if I could just take a minute of personal privilege to announce, uh, a major announcement for the city of Hoyoke.
I will turn it over to you.
The governor signed, uh, a law today that named Hoyokes Found Dinosaur as the official dinosaur of the state of Massachusetts. The, uh, Hociodosaurus hokilenus.
Hokilenus.
I'm probably butchering that, but, uh, I thought that was really cool. And, uh, so the official state dinosaur was found at Mount Tom, uh, back approximately 112 years ago. And, uh, it was officially just signed today, uh, actually last night by the governor. Uh, and, uh, so Hoyoke now has the official state dinosaur from Hoyoke. So I thought that was pretty cool. I didn't want that to go without getting mentioned.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor McGivern.
I have a daughter who works for Phil Nation in Manhattan, and there is talk about the, uh, Jurassic Park floor coming to Hoyoke.
All right, there you go.
That's how rumors start, Joe.
Those are good rumors.
Yeah.
Anyone further? Seeing none. Motion's orders, resolution. 17 from Counselor Anderson Burgos said a handicap sign be placed at 439 Beach Street. So that would be to ordinance and copy to the commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
18 from Counselor Anderson Burgos said a do not block driveway be placed in front of the driveway located at 11 Columbus Ave. Motion be receive, adopt, sent to DPW?
So moved.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, 19 from Counselor Anderson Burgos said a blinking stop sign be placed at Linden at the intersection McKenzie and Anderson. Uh, so that'd be referred to public safety.
Public safety.
Copy to DPW and City Engineer. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
20 is from Counselor Anderson Burgos that we consider adding a left turn signal traffic light for southeastbound traffic in an intersection of West Franklin and Beach. Uh, so that would be referred to public safety, City Engineer, and Mass DOT.
That's correct. I, I know that there, there was talk, um, surrounding, um, that was one of the locations that there were, uh, DOT was looking at, um, uh, addressing. So just one reference.
All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. 21 is from Counselor Anderson Burgos that a sold children at play sign be placed at both ends of Locust, West Franklin Street and McKenzie Ave. Uh, receive, adopt, sent to DPW?
Uh, no, I'm going to change that, please.
Okay.
Uh, so some documentation have been sent to me, um, from our City Engineer. I'm going to have to send that to public safety. There's going to be a greater conversation to be had. Um, I'm not going to have that conversation now, but once we get to committee, I'll, I'll go over, I'll be more than happy to go over the changes that are happening, I believe statewide. Um, but yep, just send it to public safety, please.
So public safety, copy to DPW and the engineer. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Opposed? 22 from Counselor Anderson Burgos that the ordinance committee discuss alternatives to addressing vehicles, uh, parking in front of driveways. Um, although there are citywide ordinances addressing this matter, it is often ignored and creates inconveniences to residents and forcing, uh, takes time. So that'd be to ordinance, copy to DPW, City Engineer, and HPD.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Uh, from Counselor Bartley, this is the...
Can we take, uh, suspend and take 23, 25, and 35 as a package and then receive and adopt?
All right. So 23, 25, and 35 as a package, suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 23 is that the city council give a proclamation to unite the way of Pioneer Valley for the 100th anniversary, which is June 2nd, 2022. 25 is from Counselor Bartley and myself that, uh, we give a proclamation to congratulate Hoyoke Community College for their 75th anniversary, which is, starts tomorrow. And 35 is from Counselor Bartley and myself, uh, that we give a proclamation to, uh, Chief Petrofskowsky for his dedicated service to the fire department, which is May 31st at 11 o'clock at the fire station. So motion be receive and adopt and approve all three of those. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And once again, a special thank you to Patty Devine for, uh, getting those. They're already done. She, she kind of knew how we were going to vote, but she got them done for us. She framed them.
Yep.
Uh, can't thank her enough for all the work that she does for us. Truly appreciated. Counselor McGivern.
I'm just along that note, Mr. President. I just haven't had a chance to announce to every member of the flower fund, but we have agreed to pay for the ink for our wonderful Patty Devine because Counselor Bartley is using a lot of ink these days.
You're right.
Surcharge.
I said I'm sorry. All right. Thank you for that. Uh, so 24 was done. 26 was done.
Yeah, 27.
To ordinance. So 27, uh, from Counselor Bartley, Counselor Tommen, that the mayor, DPW, HR, and City Forester work to find a staff person for at least 20 hours per week scheduled to maintain the city, uh, trees. Motion be receive, adopt, sent to Mayor, DPW, City Forester.
That's right. That's right. Just for, for further consideration during budget time.
All right.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
28 is from Counselor Givner, uh, remove the existing handicap sign at 402 Pleasant Street. Um, ordinance. Ordnance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
29 from Counselor Givner, that an effort to streamline the services to residents create language that eliminates the need for ordinances to review and the city council to vote on. Uh, installation and removal of handicap signs for residents would request a residential handicap parking qualifications. So that would go to ordinance as well.
Ordnance.
All those in favor?
Why don't you send it to the law department? Because that, that, they, they want, she wants to change our laws and so...
Well, send it to ordinance with a copy to legal.
Yeah, probably need a legal opinion on that.
All right. So all those in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Aye.
30 from Counselor Givner. It's a constituent request. Please repaint the lines where School Street meets Hampden. Uh, so motion be receive and adopt and send...
Mr. President?
Yep.
If, if, if the maker is willing, can I offer a friendly amendment to ask DPW to update us on the schedule for the painting of all the lines throughout the city? Because it's really everywhere.
So I'm old.
So...
If she's willing.
So...
That's fine.
With, with the end of it, also, uh, when, when they are first installed, they're made, uh, they made a very positive difference. And, and have DPW update on all painting.
For, for kind of communication for the next city council meeting.
So on that amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So on the whole thing, uh, motions receive, adopt, and sent to DPW as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Uh, since he's not here, we won't take up his orders. No, just kidding. Uh, Counselor Malnella Velez, uh, 31, that we add the following committees, uh, to the city council, zoning committee, public way committee, development committee. So...
Charter and rules.
Charter and rules.
All those in favor? All opposed? 32 from Counselor Malnella Velez, order that we rename, uh, joint, uh, school and city council to youth services committee. So that would also be to charter and rules.
Charter and rules.
Send a copy to the, uh, public, uh, to the, uh, school committee.
And, uh, so charter and rules, copy to school committee as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 33 is from Counselor Malnella Velez, order that we create an ordinance to allow backyard hens, uh...
Ordinance.
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
34 is from myself. Uh, this would be, uh, Michelle Lane, that we post signs at the front of it. Uh, I know it's going to be taken up in ordinance on May, I forgot which one it was, but it's going to be taken up soon. So I'd say send that to ordinance.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
35 we did.
35 was done. 36...
Take a motion to take 36 and 37 as a package, please?
Motion and rules, take up 36 and 37 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Uh, 36 is $2,240.06 from firefighters injured on duty. 37 is $19,332.23 from, uh, police, uh, to injured on duty. Motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Uh, these are, um, motions that we try to take every meeting just for the purpose of accounting, whether it's a firefighter or a police officer or public safety, that were injured on duty, some temporary, some more long-term. We take their salary, which they're still eligible for, of course, and then we put it into a line item just so we know that we're paying them appropriately, but at the same time not reflecting on what we're, what service we're getting in return.
So for 36, it's one. For 37, it's seven. So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk will call roll if you vote yes. You're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote approved that one. 38 from Counsel McGivern, it's a grant for $30,000, so to finance?
Receive for finance, please?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
39 is from Counsel Murphy Rumbelletti, that the Committee on DG and R be provided a list of all special permits issued by the Council. Please include a five-year look back on how many permits have been issued. So this would be, so receive to the City Clerk, Oped, and the Council Administrator Assistant and the Law Department. So you want to send it to committee and a copy to those?
Yes, please.
So to DG and R?
Yes.
All right, so to DG and R with a copy to Clerk, Oped, Council Administrator Assistant, and Legal Department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 40 from Counsel Murphy Rumbelletti, that the Oped and Hoyok Redevelopment Authority attend an upcoming DG and R meeting, updating the Council on the urban renewal plan, so to DG and R?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
41 from Counsel Puelo, that a no engine brakes sign. Wait a minute.
Signs.
Is it, what is it, Kevin?
No, you can't say jack brakes. Yeah, no engine brakes.
All right. Be installed at all city gateways.
I, would you, I'd like to comment, but go ahead. I'll let, you're the, all right. Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, here's the thing. I was approached by, and I am totally generally supportive of this, but I did have a very good conversation today, excuse me, not today, over the weekend with a firefighter who drives fire trucks for the city, and they have engine brakes on them. So before we just say no engine brakes in Hoyok and put signs up at every one, we do need to be careful that is it certain hours of the day, certain locations, you know? One of the big ones, obviously, is when you're coming down the hills where you got a bunch of homes, i.e. Cherry Street, i.e. 141, some of these other areas, and there's others, I could list, you know, I could go on. And it's 9 o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night, 2:00 in the morning, right? They should be a lot more judicious with just slant them on and going boom, 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 and just wake, you know, shaking somebody's whole house, you know? On the other hand, is it as big of an issue if you're simply driving down High Street or Main Street at 2:00 in the afternoon, you know? So this particular firefighter who drives fire trucks in the city said to me, you know, they really are there for safety too. You know, we don't want to go to one extreme on the other hand either. So before we just adopt this, what I'm making is a friendly suggestion, either we go to public safety, we go to ordinance, if we want to set up some parameters, maybe before we just put a blanket thing of signs out there, we may want to think about how we're gonna say certain hours, certain locations, as far as the no engine brakes go.
Why don't we send it to ordinance, yeah?
If you're comfortable with that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Counsel Paul, okay.
Emergency vehicles or something, you know?
Yeah, right, yeah, because I just don't want to put the baby out with the water.
Please add my name to this too, Mr. President.
So adding Counsel Bartley and sending to ordinance to set up locations. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
42 from Counsel Puelo, the parking and other traffic lines be repainted at 598 South Street to 500. Motion be receive and adopt?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
43, that the request be made to school receiver Anthony Soto and Morgan School Leadership to please ensure a communication request that employees and staff prioritize parking on the school lot before on street. So would you like to receive, adopt, send it to the-
School committee?
Well, send it to the superintendent.
Cool.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
44 is that Mary Nathan, disaster program manager for Western Math Red Cross, be invited in to discuss available resources. That would be to DG and R?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 45 from Counsel Puelo, order that all parking meters have access for someone to pay for them electronically. Oh yes, absolutely.
Or how about even have a meter?
So therefore, that would be-
That's, yeah, that's my order. I think it's a really good order. That's Counsel R's order. That's his.
What do you want?
That's actually my order. They kind of confused and put Puelo down, but it's cool. We could be down. I don't care. Like, it is what it is.
I have mine.
Do you want to join in on mine?
I'll join in.
I'll join in on your order.
There you go. Join in.
One minute, we can add your name to your own order.
Yeah, let me add my name to it.
We're gonna add your name.
Let's add Counsel Rivera's name to his order.
I have mine to it as well, please. But so it, I guess receive and adopt.
Well, I was just gonna make the motion receive, and then send it to the Parking Advisory Committee, because we're talking about all this stuff, so. And then we can send it back for, with the recommendation, if that makes sense for the makers.
All right, so motion be receive, adopt, send to the Advisory Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
46 from Counsel Rivera, order that the city solicitor offer begin drafting a ballot question for the next election cycle around marijuana social consumption. So this would be-
Charter and rules.
So Charter and Rules.
Or ordinance?
Copy to legal.
Legal.
Could legal find out too? Is that only us that can put that on the ballot, or can people go out and collect signatures? Because typically on some of these, we tell them, you know, if there's actual citizen interest, they might want to go collect the signatures too to put it on.
I was also gonna also recommend to legal that bill that's in the House does talk about this as well, so if legal could kind of weigh in on what that would impact this order in particular.
All right, so Charter and Rules, so copy to legal, and then they can update us. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
47, order that the committee chair limit the amount of public hearings added to the agenda. It's not fair and undemocratic to have us waiting until 10, 11 o'clock to be heard, so-
Charter and Rules?
Charter and Rules.
And this kind of goes in hand in hand with what we're thinking about with the 10 o'clock rule too, right? You know, because then-
All right, so it's Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 48 from Counsel Rivera, order that the mayor set aside education and training funds for a City Council, preferably no more than 1,000. What doesn't get used goes back in the general fund, so that would be Finance?
Do you want just to adopt it and send it to the mayor? See if he wants to add it to the budget?
All right, motion be receive-
Finance.
And send to the mayor. So receive, send to the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
1,000 per counselor?
Total. That's tall.
Mr. President, if I may, so I can explain, because, so the 48 and 49 could actually be taken up if, they could be a package.
With iPads, too.
Yeah, so the idea, the idea is that the 1,000 or whatever they decide to allocate could go towards purchasing the iPads and training people on the iPad or the laptop for those that need the training, right? And how to use the Google Docs service, that way, the Google Drive. So that way, when it comes to the point, we don't have to use as much paper and ink, and we will possibly save a lot more money and time for our administrative assistants, right, that are actually printing out stacks and stacks of paper. So for me, it's about being effective and efficient in city government, right, with taxpayer dollars. And hopefully, we get this. That would be cool. If not, then whatever.
All right, so take 48 and 49 as a package, suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the first one, 48, was the $1,000. 49 is that the mayor set aside the money, up to the $1,000, for purchasing of iPads for the council, as stated by Counsel Rivera. So motion be receive both of those and send them to the mayor?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 50 is from Counsel Rivera, order that the Park and Rec Department come up with a uniform system around flying the flags, so that would be-
Park and Rec?
Park and Rec, so receive, adopt, send to Park and Rec.
Why are we receiving and adopting it?
Well, that they come up with a plan, so.
Why don't you send it to committee and why don't you send it to public safety?
On public safety?
Come back with a plan.
Okay.
That's a good one, Bartley.
All right, so public safety.
It's in a while.
Or the copy to-
Even a broken clock is right twice a day.
Copy that, copy that, doctor.
All right, to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
51 is from Counsel Rivera, order that the Honorable City Council add the following committee: Communications Committee, Senior Citizen Quality of Life-
Charter and Rules.
Charter and Rules.
I might become a chairman yet, Mr. President.
We're working on it.
13, we're up to 13 committees.
We're gonna have shorter meetings, for sure.
Actually thought, I actually thought of you in the senior citizen.
Thank you, yeah, senior citizen.
I actually thought about that.
I want us to start meeting on Saturday.
I got a shot. I got a shot yet.
We'll be meeting on Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday mornings.
Saturday? Hey, Joe, Christmas Eve.
That's right.
Christmas Eve.
Division of Labor, bro, the division of labor. That is a real thing in public administration. Understand that, please.
So 251 to Charter and Rules.
I gotta read the pieces on that one.
All those opposed? 52 from Counsel Tommen, the following resolution to support of the District of the Ordinance Committee. Work with the mayor and the appropriate city and state departments to adopt an ordinance creating a Parrykan Cultural District within the city of Hoyok. So-
Ordinance?
To ordinance?
Ordinance.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me to that.
Can I be added to that, please?
Adding Counsel Puelo? Is it Anderson Burgos?
Rivera, too.
Anderson Burgos?
Both of them.
Jordan?
Rivera?
Both of you, yes.
Anyone, everyone?
Yeah, put them all in.
I mean, everybody in.
At all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I better see everybody out there.
Ah, he doesn't know.
There we go.
All right. 253, Counsel Bacon, Counsel Bartley, Counsel Puelo, that the City Council approve a resolution opposing the closure of the VA Hospital in Leeds. This would lead to an extreme travel hardship, so this would be motion-
This motion receive and adopt.
And ask our administrative assistant to send it to the state delegation and our federal delegation. I'm sure Rep. Neal would have something to say on this.
And the governor, please.
Can I be added as a co-sponsor, too?
Yeah, could I be added also?
So we're gonna send it to the governor?
Add us all, too.
The congressman?
Add all.
President Biden?
Add us all.
Add all.
And then motion is to receive, adopt, asking Jeffries to send a copy to state delegation, the governor, and Congressman.
Absolutely.
Granted.
You get a bonus if you get the president on the phone.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
54 from Counsel Bacon, that our legal department send a letter to the Waste Management outline times to emptying dumpsters as written in our city ordinance. Constituent are complaining near McMahon School, so-
Receive, adopt, and send to legal, please?
Motion is receive, adopt, send to legal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion adjourned?
Nope.
Okay.
Didn't hear it. No, just kidding. There's only a couple late files. Late file, Counsel, this is from the mayor, actually. Counselors, please be advised that I oppose the Historical Commission proposal to extend the existing demolition delay period from six months to 12, so this would go to-
Ordinance.
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 We're debating that right now, actually.
All opposed?
Aye.
B is from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. This is regarding the MSBA and their vote with regards to-
We refer out to finance, Mr. President, and is there an attached language or?
Yeah, there is, right? There's separate votes.
Yeah, I think there's like three votes there.
So B is the, is the letter that we should have all received.
Yeah, there's three, right?
Yeah, so F, G, and H will, how about we take up B, F, G, and H as a package?
Yes, so moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So B is the-
For all for finance?
Yeah, B is the communication. F is from myself, order that the council agree to use the district's prior feasibility study for Peck Middle School. G is for myself, order that the City Council agree to proceed with the using of consultants for the school itself. And the last one, H, is that the City Council agrees that they'd like the MSBA to invite in the model school program to explore the options that would, for the financial project of the Peck Middle School, which is the votes that we'll have to take to go forward with the MSB's recommendation. So all those to finance?
Mr. President, can I say it's a point of order? I think it's a point of order, if I may?
Sure.
I do have an order that we adopted relative to Peck to ensure that we have a meeting in that neighborhood. So not here, not at the senior center, but in that neighborhood, preferably at Peck, to invite everybody in the neighborhood that's likely going to be pretty highly impacted by this. So I don't know where that actually stands at this point. I don't even know where the order is, but I know I-
It's in ordinance.
It's in ordinance.
Okay, well, at some point, when we take this up, ordinance has got to work with finance to help facilitate that, and